Where are we going to do that?
Hold the kids.
Yeah, all right. So we're going to hold the pledge because we're going to do it with the kids.
Yeah, what we did was we picked out one of the weekly series, just to give you an idea of what the children are doing, and we selected the one from last week.
You're on objective.
Right, they know you're going to take cameras off, right? Both cameras are off for the...
No, I should turn them off. Yeah, I was just going to knock you there.
It's like when I saw it.
It was pretty subtle.
Remember, it's produced by children for children, so. Okay, are we on TV now?
Oh, there you go. Any correspondence, Chris?
None.
None, okay. Any public comment, Marsha?
Come on, it's like Van Nuys.
Hi, how are you? No, okay, no public comment. Consent agenda, does anybody have any extractions for the consent agenda? Okay, then.
Will we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Great, thank you. All righty, PTO update. Bree, you're up.
Oh, good.
How are you?
Sorry, I was a little late. Okay. Thanksgiving food drive, we started out a little slow, and the last week we got a big push from parents just with regular emails, so we were able to get quite a bit of groceries to the families that we had a list for, and those were all picked up and distributed. We also had fresh fruits and vegetables, and added fresh produce on the last day by banking committee. The Skolastic book fair wrapped up last week. We had a little bit of a hiccup with the delay and the snow day, but we don't have the final numbers yet, but we had heavy traffic. The kids came in very eager and very happy. Good feedback from the teachers, they were very accommodating with us trying to get everybody in there on those last three days, so I think it went well. I think we'll be fine. We did extend hours on Friday. We were open the entire day on Friday, but they dumped the fact that we had missed, I guess it was Tuesday. And now we're in the midst of the toy drive. We had a toy drive going on that's actually not being sponsored by the PTO, it's being sponsored by the Cayute family from Woodbridge, and they are collecting for the Yale Children's Hospital to distribute presents there. The PTO is sponsoring families from the Beecher community that might need a little bit of assistance in supplying toys for their individual families. We have that list, shopping was done today, so we will have those presents wrapped in from office for pickup tomorrow. And we're wrapped for the year.
Thank you very much, Bree, thank you. Okay, Dr. Stella, you are up.
I want to start by thanking the PTO. Bree, thank you, and the executive board, because the PTO, by your actions, children watch what we do probably more than listen to what we say, and by your actions you model what it means to give service and to reach out to families in need, and it's a very important part of character building. PTO is all over, very visible, and those actions are very, very visible to our children. In fact, they participate in it, so we thank you on many fronts for what you're doing. And also with the book fair, our children are literally immersed in a sea of literacy, and the book fair is one aspect of that. Now, this past week hasn't been so great with weather, so that could kind of get you down, and, but the PTO has been wonderful in accommodating and being flexible with the book fair, because once you step into that gymnasium filled with books, you just get energized. The children do, everyone does, so it added a lot of excitement and a very positive note to the week, so we thank you very, very much for what you did for that. And for our TV audience, just to let you know, you missed out on something. Before we went on camera, we showed one of the weekly broadcasts that our children do, televised, broadcast, televised throughout the school. It's a news program produced by children and acted out by children, performed by children, and it covers a lot of important things. It was, we showed last week, said it was a focus on Nelson Mandela, and shared a lot of important information with the school about that. So those are two aspects. But I'll say too, because you'll hear my voice a lot and see a lot of me today with the budget presentation, so I'll just limit my remarks to the fact that a good school, a high-performing school sure has high academic indicators, social, emotional, et cetera, but it's also a place, places, successful schools, a place where there's magic in the air, where there's excitement, where there's a sense of joy, and going around the school this past week, probably week and a half, if not two, the types of productions and shows and musicals and music in the air, and just added to my belief that this is a place not only of learning, but a place of nurturing too. So I'll pass, with that being said, I'll pass it over to Gina Prisco, our principal for the R S update.
Good evening, everybody. I will keep my comments brief this evening, but it is just to reiterate a few thank yous. The book fair is a huge undertaking, and it doesn't happen with one person. There were a number of volunteers here, came in whether the weather was cooperating or not, and the family night, I was able to stay for a bit, lots of traffic, so without all of the volunteers and the parent support, bringing their families back in the evening, shopping with their families, and then going over to the table where the teachers were putting in their wish lists, so we do thank everybody for that. And yes, there is magic in the air. It is about reading, it is about writing, it's about arithmetic, but it's also about the things that children will remember, those special performances, if it's kindergarten or first grade or poetry reading in third grade, but we have a special guest that's coming back with one of our first grade programs this year, retired teacher Ellen Regan will be joining the first grade. It's tradition for her and Mrs. Piazek, for Ms. Piazek to have their annual performance, and Mrs. Regan has come back to do the music with the children. So if you have a child that's in one of these events or a sibling, you know how special it really is to them, and they'll remember it forever. So that's my update, enjoy the magic.
Thank you. Yeah, you're still on. Yeah, we're ready for budget.
Okay, I'm going to try. I'm going to come to this corner over here. If any of the board members can't hear me or can't see, just raise your hand, pull on your ear, whatever. I'm going to go somewhere I don't know where to. I don't want to chase the chair of the finance committee away. I don't want to get off the bed start, so.
Long time. Long time.
I'm going to have to come behind the camera. So give him an orchestra seat. I want to start off by saying that I thank you for this opportunity to present this recommended budget, and a lot of thought went into it, as always, a lot of collective thought, including input from our board, finance committee, from our staff, our administrators, and a lot of personal talk, thought also, and vision went into this year. And what I promised almost nine years ago when I first started, that I would, I would follow a mantra of always working with all constituents to improve the quality of education at Beecher Road School, at the same time having that balance of being respectful to the taxpayer, and that's what we have tried to do with this budget. And I'll begin too with a thanks to our school board members, because you, present school board and past, have supported education in Woodbridge, have valued education, so we thank passports for their support, present one for the current support, and we're asking you for continued support. Let me start by, by sharing some quotes that I think will outline our philosophy upon which this budget is based. We don't create a budget, we create a vision, and we create a plan, and then a budget to support that, and that's what we've done. And this is from Dr. Prince, it was from one of the current think tanks that looks at trends that are happening, a futurist, but not 50 years down the line, a futurist looking at the next five, 10 years. So one of the quotes is, "The future is not a fixed point, it's ours to create." And there's not one future at Beecher Road School for our children, there is as many futures as there are our children, and every one of our children is so unique, and everyone has such talents and gifts, some hidden, some very apparent and visible, and every one of our children have needs, and what we do and what we don't do will affect what the future of that individual child is. So our budget is based on that premise. Also, another quote, this quote starts to get a little lengthier, so I'm going to chop them up a little bit. "Changes point the way towards a diverse learning ecosystem." Ecosystem, we know that's an organization, organism with lots of parts that fit together, and a healthy ecosystem have parts that fit together so nicely that it just, there's a self-renewal and a generating kind of factor that's there, there's a life to it, and that's what schooling is, in which each learning agent, and who are our learning agents? Those are the teachers that work with your children, and the teachers in the classroom, the psychologists, the support staff, the cafeteria worker, the administrators, everyone who comes in contact with your children. So the changes point the way towards a diverse learning ecosystem in which each learning agent adapts to each child, instead of each child trying to adopt to the school. Beecher Road School does it all, we like to say that. Yes, there's a strong emphasis on academics, but there also is a strong emphasis in social emotional development of children, as well as physical development and wellness factors. So we're looking at the whole child, and we're trying to gear everything more and more to the child at the center. Any new curriculum that comes in, there's the curriculum, but there's the child at the center of the curriculum. We're preparing, this budget helps us prepare for a new reality, because there are so many changes happening outside the school that have to affect the way the school is going. Another quote, educators' jobs will diversify as many learning agent roles emerge to support learning. And with your support, with your support and out of passports, haven't we started that? Where it's not the one teacher in front of the classroom, that there's a whole team approach, like a medical team approach, where there are different types of specialists and so on that work hand in hand with the classroom teacher, and where groups of teachers and educators confer and talk about individual children and groups of children and how we could do better with them. So this budget helps us prepare for a new reality. There's an explosion of innovation has been, an explosion of innovation has been transforming how we think about learning, and how we organize talent and other resources for learning experiences, and has effectively unbundled, unbundled school as we know it, as we knew it, I should say, in the past. Education today is not the type of education that I received as a youngster in a large class, where the teacher was the sole disseminator of knowledge, and the arrow of recitation went from the children to the teacher. Today you have an open field, and we're moving towards more personal learning, and towards 24/7 learning, and towards learning where space and location at times does not have an importance to it. So that's important for us to look down the pike today and where the children are going, and to prepare them for their future, not our past. Preparing for a new reality demands a number of things. One, support for the mission from all constituents. Tenacity, tenacity in spite of no matter what the challenges are, what the hurdles are, of focusing on the mission, keeping your, our eye on the prize, and just moving ahead. A clear vision, which we have, teamwork, which is very apparent from all sides, and what we need is continued help with the type of human and physical resources that are necessary. We started our approach in developing this budget, a lot of work goes into preparing a budget, with a, as close to a zero base approach that we could use, and that means starting from, from, from the bottom, from the grassroots, I should say, not the bottom, with teachers and departments submitting requests. The requests have to tie into a mission, what do you need to get the job done? And the requests are reviewed by administrators first, and they interact, and dialogue builds meaning as they interact. You know, we can't have everything, there may be a wish list, what's necessary, what's valuable, then what are the priorities, what dollar spent will get the most effect? And the final dialogue happens with the superintendent, where we sit and again raise those same questions. What's necessary? What do we need to get the most impact? What will give the most powerful impact? What will give long-range impact? And we realize again the mantra, quality education, we can never move backwards, we owe it to the children to move forward into the world that they're going into. And we owe it to the taxpayer to, to have a trust, to build their trust, that we're doing this in a meaningful way that is not taking advantage. We scrubbed every account, there are almost 300 accounts, we scrubbed every account. Over one-half of all accounts were zero or less. Okay, Col, you remember this question, were there any surprises? Yes, there were surprises, and sometimes surprises are good, and sometimes surprises aren't good. So let's take a look. Increased student enrollment, that's a good surprise. That means children want to come to our school, that means families want to come and move to Woodbridge, that means there's a good, healthy atmosphere, and we left children, we tell parents, keep the children coming, we tell school board members, keep your children and grandchildren coming too. It's the lifeblood of our school. We had an increase, we had a spike especially this year, when we had to open a kindergarten class the Friday before the Labor Day weekend. Was that poor planning? Ask Dr. Stella, no. No, it was, it was the, it was a phenomenon, and I would underline the word phenomenon that happened. An outpouring of families, or an importing, entry of families into, into the Beecher Road community. And I tried to interview as many parents as possible, and they came for a variety of reasons, but there was one commonality, and that was the school system. And I asked the strategies that they used to try to identify a school system, it was an interesting conversation, but it was a phenomenon, that we had so many, particularly in our kindergarten classroom, plus 10 sets of twins. Another surprise was the medical insurance. It skyrocketed. Last year, if you remember, we came in at 3 percent. It tripled, over, tripled plus. We're coming in at 10 percent, and that's based on the latest information we have, and we work closely with our insurance consultant, as well as with the town. And if there's any changes in that, we'll come back to the board first of all, and to the town, and we'll work closely with, with the town. But, so that, that increased quite a bit, and has a large responsibility for our increase in budget. A pleasant surprise, a decrease in special ed cost. Now, we're obligated by law to educate children in the least restrictive environment, which means the neighborhood school, and our staff does a marvelous job of that, to see what they do with our special ed children is just heartbreaking. But there are times when we, when the educational need of a child, when we can't meet those educational needs that we need in other environments. So fortunately, what's happening now, we're able to educate the vast majority of our special ed kids onsite, and there are still some that are there, and enough, the tuition for outplacement has decreased. This however, is a moving target, because that's the data we have today. It could change, there could be more of a decrease, then we would come back to the board and say that. And the agreement we have with the town, if there are unexpected costs that happen, we would come back and just share that also. Another surprise has been the rapid increase in legislative mandates. Patrice McCarthy, the attorney for CAPE, the school board organization, said, "In all her years, she has never seen so many task force and committees designed to produce legislation that impact on the schools." And it's the quantity of these mandates that are happening at the same time, I'm not making a judgment, I'm just, the quantity at the same time, that is really creating a year where we have to figure out how everything fits together with, with our general shared vision. And I want to share something with you, now, this is a very, very busy slide, so forgive me if I just walk you through parts of it. What this shows here is you have your 2013-14 breakout grid of class, of class placement, and the number of classes on, on each grade level, the number of teachers and so on. Okay? And if you, you can see, we have a total of 40 classroom teachers. Now remember, this year, phenomenon, a year like no other, as far as some of the logistics in the school. We had to add a kindergarten teacher this year that wasn't in last year's budget, but we, you know, with the support of the school board and the town, we brought on a teacher, and we brought our kindergarten teacher, plus a teaching assistant. Now, if I could go on this side here, tell me if I'm blocking your view. We did the best work we can with the data available. One of the hardest things to project is kindergarten enrollment in December for the following year. So we looked at all the data that we could get our hands on. Yes, we did work with a demographer, but we put a lot of our input into it also. We looked at birth rates, we looked at patterns, children enrolling in the school, we called preschools up, nursery schools, we tried to get a good sense, we spoke to one of our medical advisors to find out about the phenomena of twins and triplets, and so what are the chances of, of having that kind of thing happen again? So we put all that together, and our estimates at this time, and I, what I would ask is for flexibility as far as placement, because this child, the children are at the center, and that's where we want to put our teachers. It's not about adults, it's about where are the, where are the children's needs? So we're projecting five classes in kindergarten. But you could say, "Dr. Stella, look, you had six, you have six first grades this year, now you're asking for seven, another one." Yeah, well, that's because of the large number of kindergarten children coming up, and we expect a few more first graders. Now, I have to also mention this here, we work closely with the school board, and the school board has given us the charge of coming in and trying to follow to the extent possible our, the board guidelines and class size. We're asking our teachers to do an awful lot, we're moving towards, you know, futurists talking about differentiation, personal learning, we're moving towards doing things differently in classrooms, smaller groups, individuals, and so on, and different types of organization, so we need the smaller class sizes. These are not the smallest in the state, but they're not the largest either. So you have that one teacher, say, "Where did that teacher came from, come from?" Well, that teacher was the teacher that would have gone into the kindergarten class if we needed six, so we were able to internally just place it in first grade. So wait a minute, second grade, the six teachers, that's one more than we have this year. Yes, because we want to follow the class size guidelines, and so we're recommending that, that that take place. Now, where is that teacher coming from? That teacher, again, respected the taxpayer, we're looking internally, we're taking a support position that is already in existence this year, that came into existence this year for one year, and we're using that position to make it a classroom position. So that covers the second grade. You say, "Hold on, Dr. Stella, you're asking for, what, third grade? Six teachers, that's one more than, than this year." Yes, class size should not exceed 19, and that's what we project, then where does that teacher come from? That's the one teacher that we're asking for in our budget, one classroom teacher. We'll increase by two classroom positions, but one will come from the new budget, the rest is internal. So 42 this year, we had 40 last year. And again, you could write down any questions that you have, so I'll try to answer as we go along, I know afterwards. Now staffing, staffing needs, as the board knows, staffing levels are adjusted in response to actual enrollment. A number of years ago, we just, we stated that we would be as transparent as possible, and share the data with everyone, and our, share our thinking and our decision-making with everyone. And a question was asked, "Well, if you're projecting 785, what year came closest to that number, and what was the staffing like?" Now, Col was with us, was a school board member that was with us at that time, that was the first full year that I served as a superintendent, 2006, 2007. And that, that was, we had 793 children, and that was the staffing. Now, those of you, and Col remembers this here, that were with us at that time, you remember, that was the day of the great budget cut, you know, the great storm, the great recession, the great budget cut. I came in as a new superintendent, and we had a below zero budget. So staffing was trimmed, was trimmed for this year, to respond to those very deep cuts in budget. So how do we compare with that year? Well, you could see, administrator, we had cut one administrator, so we were down to five. Compared with that year, we're down a half a teacher, we're down four teacher assistants, there's a difference of .5, we have .5 less operational support. So the difference was 129.1, and that was considered a pair and down of staff, to 124 now, and our projection, projection is for 785. That number could be influenced by a variety of things, and you could see in your own neighborhoods, how many houses will go up for sale, who will move in, if there are children, will they be kindergarteners, will they be high school children, middle school children, you know, whatever. We're trying to stay in touch with the demographer, with the doctors about the twins and the triplets, with the, with the real estate agent about which houses are going up. I spoke to one real estate agent not so long ago, and he said, "There were 23 closings that were going to happen in January." So now, if they all have children, go to Beecher Road School, that number will go up. If they have children who are going to one grade where there's a need for another and not so much to the other, we may have to change teachers at the, you know, at the, at the end of the year. We'll try to do it in a way that makes sense for children, and is respectful to our parents at the same time, but we need a little bit of flexibility, especially in the, in the lower years with that. Okay, here's another busy slide, but again, we want to be transparent with this here. It's our personnel grid. And if I could run to this side here, I don't know which side is the best, better side, so I'll try and bowl down. So, yeah, I don't want to get in your way here. So if you look at, can you see, school board members here? We're asking for one teacher in the budget. We're going down in our budget request, one teaching assistant, and we're requesting a part-time cafeteria worker. Why are we doing that? It's a little expense item, but it's beneficial for our children, it has a direct benefit to our children. Right now, we have two cafeteria workers, and we need another one. We have a large cafeteria, we have a lot of children, and we want to promote a safe and a nurturing kind of cafeteria environment for our children too. And hiring the right people, which we do, and Nancy White is, Gina has appointed her as the lead person in the cafeteria, we've organized our workers, our TAs help out too, to try to provide that safe environment. By the way, thanks again for the school board's help and the town's help with the acoustics in the, in the lunchroom, it's helped tremendously, as far as making it more comfortable. And this will show the actual staff from, that's exists today, 2013-14, remember, it's an unusual year, and I want the town side to realize that, where we had to add a kindergarten teacher and a, a teaching assistant, and we had one other position that we, that we had to add. Now, let me jump on this side here, from my other side. What does this budget support? And some of this is repetition, but I think it's important repetition. It supports a carefully thought out, and will involve you with your, and works with committee and so on, and at different board meetings, a carefully thought out educational mission, a shared vision of where we want to go as a school. It respects and, 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 and moves towards the Board of Education class guidelines, in fact, it does meet the Board of Education guidelines. It supports two classroom teaching positions, now, one in the budget though, but it creates that, one-time cafeteria aide. Continued development of Common Core Curriculum Performance Assessment, you'd probably say, "I hear so much about the Common Core, when do we finish with it?" We would never finish with it. It's, uh, it's, Common Core is part of the transformation that's taking place in education, as the country as a whole looks at what's happening globally, and saying, "Look, we, we have, we have, the children are facing a new world here, we have to raise our standards." We have to raise our standards, we have to dig deeper, we have, we're too wide right now and too superficial, we have to dig deeper. And what it means, and I'll summarize some of the other things that you'll hear later too, it means that we take the standards, there's so many of them. We take the most powerful ones that will have an impact on the life of our children as we see them growing and going into middle school and high school. We look at the K to twelve continuum and how it fits together. Then standards are dead by themselves, we have to translate them into an active, living curriculum that works for our children. And we have to do it in a way too that keeps our basic premises and our philosophies and moves towards how do you help every child in their pathway? We have benchmarks for grades, but how do you look at every child? The child who needs more help, the child who is so advanced and so on. So that takes time, it takes human resources, it takes different types of roles, of people to help children, it takes instructional materials, it takes a lot of things. So Common Core is a very big driving thing. What does this budget support? I've mentioned this already, so I'll just jump on to the other. And a focus on all children, every single child. Now, I know I'm exaggerating a little bit, but maybe it gets a point, of course. Some children coming to school reading the New York Times, some children coming to school not having a recognition of sounds and letters. Our population is a diverse one. So we have to meet the needs mandated by law of children who are not succeeding and provide the types of services that they're mandated to get, not only by law, but it's the right thing to do. At the same time, and we've demonstrated this here with our CMT report, the number of children at Beach Road School that are at the advanced level is increasing. So that's the other end of the spectrum in a sense, and you have everyone in the middle. But with our CMT report, we showed that in some categories, well over, we're not talking about children on gold, or past that, well over fifty percent of our children in some areas are in that situation. So how do we meet their needs? That's important too. We want to support enhancement of balanced literacy model. And again, that's something you hear over and over, when is that finished? Never. Because what that has to do is connect it with lifelong learning and thinking, it's not about teaching a child just how to read a book or write a story. There's a saying that, that anyone who really reads a book and understands it and absorbs it and talks about it with someone else rewrites that book. So we want our children to be able to rewrite books that they read. We want them to write their own books. We want them to be able to deal with the multiple genres of reading and writing, whether or not they're tested in standardized tests or not. We want them to be thinkers, we want them to make author connections, their own as well as other authors. We want them to use authors as mentors, not only their teachers, but looking for authors as mentors. And we want them involved with traditional and digital literacy. We want more, we want involvement with nonfiction, which is so important for the imagination, for the growth of the mind, but also deeper involvement with nonfiction. Our children are eating up books, they are devouring them. So our class libraries are growing, that's a good sign and that's a good indicator. Our central library is growing, our access to technology and digital literacy is growing. So the children are truly immersed in the sea of literacy, and we want that to continue. Embedded professional development is extremely important. That means as close to the classroom as possible. A great gift and resource that we've had that's developed over the years at Beach Road Schools is we have a highly educated staff and faculty, and that's a gold line. And you're all involved, many of you are involved with the corporate world or nonprofits, whatever. The strength that, I'm sure you will agree, the strength of an organization is not necessarily the equipment they have, but the human resources and the ability to constantly knowledge build, constantly knowledge build. And that's what we want to continue to do here, and even in a better way of knowledge building, of using the strengths of individual teachers and other teachers collectively to get a verge that you couldn't get without that kind of diversity. And again, that ties in with professional learning. We want to support the core curriculum areas, we talk about reading and writing, they don't exist by themselves. They exist in the multiple literacies of mathematics and science and social studies and history and geography and health and all the different subject areas. What does this budget support? State and federal mandates, including special education. And again, our staff does such an outstanding job, Sheila Havercamp is here, our director, and she works with such a fine team of meeting the needs of every child, and we have such a diversity of needs here, very extreme needs and needs of just a little push ahead or a safety net, you might say. And professional learning, not only embedded within the school, but we want our teachers and our administrators and our superintendents, everyone, to go out to the city gates too and to go for that summer institute, you know, yes, during our vacation times, to go for that weekend of learning somewhere, to go to an institute, a seminar, to get involved in webinars, to use technology so that they could work on different types of things and develop their own social networks outside of school and talk about children and instruction and teaching and learning as they go along. It supports a comprehensive before and after-school technology academy, because technology is racing along and it's a tool for instruction. And there's a differentiation for staff too, as far as where every person is with technology. So there's a menu of things that happen before and after school this year. And something we've been talking about for a long time is moving, evolving towards, it's always a work in progress, studying learning pathways and differentiation, and trying to look for that. It's a complicated process, but it's a year by year, step by step building process where we're trying to move more and more towards that. What does this support? It supports the social, emotional and physical development of every student. Again, we do it all at Beach Road School. We have teachers and educators in different roles that support the social, emotional, physical. We have our psychologists, our social workers, our speech therapists, we, phys ed teachers. And this budget supports a tri-state visit, anticipated for the coming year, which is a three-day visit. I would say probably about ten to fourteen of our colleagues from some of the highest performing districts in the tri-state area will once again come to Beach Road School, just as we go out to other school districts to help them, to think aloud together, take a look at our math program and say, well, okay, how do we get better? How do we go beyond standardized tests? Help us think aloud together to it, and it's a pretty intensive process. It's not to give a report card, it's to think aloud. And part of the success of it is the preparation, the self-analysis that takes place before the visit even takes, occurs. The budget meets the custodial and building maintenance needs of this huge facility with interconnecting structures. Now, what is it, a hundred seventy thousand square feet and a variety of extensions? It meets our transportation requirements, which is nearly five percent of our budget. It meets all contractual obligations. What are the challenges that we face and that we'll need this budget to help meet? Well, challenges, I like to think of another word too, challenges and opportunities, they go hand in hand. One is increased student enrollment, and I'll keep saying, keep those children coming. The other is the rapid implementation of the federal standards, and this is the, this is the year of figuring it out at Beach Road School. Figuring out how do we take state mandates, look for the silver lining and everything, but how do we translate it into our philosophy that has developed over the years that focuses on children? Challenge is differentiating instruction and personal learning. How do you blend that in with a standards-based curriculum? And how do you, how do we make sure, how do we make sure that we include in that with all the testing and so on that's going, how do we make sure we include infusion of creativity, innovation, critical thinking, the characteristics that every think tank that I've encountered talks about, twenty-first century skills, that these are the marks of the needs of our children too, as they, as they move into a new world? And the challenge is, how do we constantly improve student achievement commensurate with high expectations? Woodbridge supports education, values education and demands that we provide our children with a, with an outstanding education. And we seek to become a higher performing district without unreasonable burden to the taxpayer, because we realize that there's not a lot of industry in town, that the town has always been supportive of education, but that we have an obligation to the town too. We're all part of the same town, and we all have to watch out for each other. And the challenge is, how do we meet the needs of every student? Every student, remember we said, we realize every student is unique, it means the academic, social, emotional, physical needs of every student in an increasingly complex world that they're coming from. One of my favorite sayings, how do we prepare children for their future, not our past? I made a promise when I came nearly nine years ago that I would follow that mantra and work with staff to follow it, and that's, again, higher quality with as much respect to the taxpayer as we could give. And we showed it, the school board, all of us showed that last year, when we came in with a zero. That didn't happen by accident. And with the school board's support, we went back to the town, we originally were asking for, I think it was a point eight or a point nine increase, and working together, we found a cost-saving way of going, being able to go back to the town and say, you know what, we could go down to zero and still fulfill our mission. So we came in with zero. This year, because of the increased, two important factors, the increased cost of health and benefits, and also the need with our expanding population to catch up, again, our population has been increasing for approximately the last five years, that we're asking for a two-point-nine percent increase. We scrub the accounts, there's nothing padded, we've been as transparent as we could be in saying why we need it. And the request equates to an average annual increase of less than one-point-five percent over the past two years, if you look at it from that point of view. Okay, budget by category, and Al, if I miss something with this, feel free to just chime Here's the pie. Okay, which piece of the pie would you like? If it was a nice chocolate pudding pie, or whatever your favorite is, coconut custard, whatever, apple pie, well, most of the, most of this, of the percentage goes to salaries and benefits, almost eighty percent. Now, I would tell our audience not to be shocked by that, because education is a people-intensive industry. That's what it's intended to be, to have people working directly, that's when it's at its best, when you have people in different roles, working as a team, working with children, directly with children. And then we have things like professional services, and that's professional development, expenses related to staff attending conferences and seminars, that takes in legal expenses, software support, substitutes, teachers on maternity leave, and other professional services such as IT support, we have a very comprehensive technology network over here. Then we have services, property services, that's one-point-six percent. That's for utilities, heating, repairs and maintenance, leases and rentals, building improvements, and other services such as safety issues, infrastructure, boiler cleaning, anything associated with that. We have purchase services, the other triad there, part of the triad, and that's for transportation, insurance, telephone, internet, postage, advertising, interns, tuition of outplaced children, and that could be special ed children or to our winter read magnet school. So that gives you, gives you a budget by category. For those who like a little more detail with this here, again, it's a busy slide, and we did send the packet to everyone to look at, so let me just highlight a few things in this busy slide here, and again, I'll go to this side here, tell me if I'm in your way. What are some of the things I'll highlight with this here? Well, if you look at it, one thing is salaries, remember salaries and benefits are eighty percent, so salaries take a big part of the budget. There's an increase of two-point-nine percent of salaries. Now, this is the second year of our agreement with the WEA, the teachers' union, so it's the year where, last year it wasn't, it's the year that steps come into it, steps that means experienced teachers are paid by the step that they're on, so there's an increase with that. So the total increase is two-point-nine percent in that area. Benefits, one up, over eight percent. And then I would say, things to point out, there are things that went down too. Utilities went down, heating, well, again, thanks to the board's support, the town's support, we have new boilers, high-efficiency boilers being installed now as I'm speaking, and in the wintertime, so that went down twenty-three percent. We anticipate that that will go down twenty-three percent, it could be more, we're not sure, but we, our estimate is twenty-three percent. And we're looking at, out of district tuition, at this time, again, reading the data we have in front of us, it's twenty percent minus, minus twenty percent. So that will give you a rough sketch, I'm sure you'll have some questions afterwards. Anything you want to highlight, Al, with this here? Anything else that I, okay? Go back to the side. And again, you've had a chance to look this over, and this is a snapshot of our staffing grid. It tells us, you know, sometimes you get drowned in data, the important thing with data is to make connections. So when I look at this, at the connection, these are the connections I make, that we have a staff with a lot of experience, by and large. Over seventy percent of our staff has ten or more years' experience. And I would say, and this, we could say this because we live in the school practically, visiting the classes and watching lessons and seeing how teachers teach and children learn, that we have effective experience too. You can have experience and you can have very successful demonstrated experience. And again, we have some new people coming in, so it adds a little diversity of experience so that you don't have a bubble in one year where you have, so down in the future where you have a large number of people retiring, as happened one time in the past, and so this allows for the continuity of philosophy to continue and to make some new hires too as we go along. Education-wise, you could see that well over ninety percent, the high nineties of the teachers have a master's degree and beyonds. And even this year, where you see the bachelors with six, don't be fooled by that, because a couple of people are right near the tail end of getting their masters. And you have other people who have numerous graduate academic courses that don't translate into a master's. They've taken a certain direction with science or that and so on, and they weren't particularly interested in getting the title of master's, but they have taken those advanced courses. So highly educated staff, highly experienced staff. Are the taxpayers getting their money's worth? Well, the children are, and that means the taxpayers are too then. And some indicators, there are lots of different kinds of indicators. Okay, if we want to use the standardized indicators, standardized tests, that's one way of looking at it. This circle, three-hundred-sixty degrees, that's from one side of the circle. The CMT is the only standardized test that we had by the state, was audited and so on. We came out at the top of the mountain as far as Beach Road School history last year. We're in one of the highest performing DURGs, DURG, a grouping of over twenty high-performing districts. We, I did a comprehensive report that's on our website that showed that we were number one and two in a number of key categories of academic areas. What we showed more than that, we dug deeper, we showed cohort growth over time, we showed the number of children at advanced, the number of children at gold, the number of children reading grade level, and they were all positives. Some areas to work on like any plan, but the indicators of overall success were there. Another indicator, you have what's called the school performance index. The new commissioner coming in with a new team, works with consultants in creating a new accountability system where every school is rated and categorized throughout the state, every single school and district. And the five categories, the highest is excelling, and there's a complicated formula that translates like a blender that comes up with a number and puts you in the category. And I'm not surprised, but we're happy to see that, because it's a very complicated formula, that Beach Road School is in the excelling category. I think we were the only borough district to reach that category, and there are a lot of ways that you could be a good school and not be in that category too, so we were able to meet all the requirements of that. Then is the recognition that we continue to have in the arts. Again, this is the only elementary school Again, this is the only elementary school where you have an adjudication, music adjudication that I've had, that I know of. And that means judges come from other states to sit with our children, in front of them, to listen to them, to give them direct feedback and to judge them. It gives an opportunity to, because of Beecher Road School's connections, Mr. Letcher, give him a lot of credit for this too, he built this over the years, have the other schools come in and perform in as well. So we invite the other schools to come in as well. Our children came away with platinum awards and gold, platinum and gold. So they did very, very well. For the arts, all you have to do is look at the empirical evidence, take a walk, a gallery walk through the school. And we did that with the school board. We had our video camera rolling around to see the quality of artwork from preschool up to sixth grade, the variety and the quality, the creativity, everything that goes into it. And what we learned on that walk too, was the amount of art history that the children were learning as well, thanks to the broad knowledge base of our two art teachers and our staff members here, many, many other of whom have majored in art history. Our accomplishment, we presented to the school board, and we showed data to show how our children were advancing with world language and leaving sixth grade. And we showed our plans to help them do better in the future as well. We have other Boeot districts that will be coming to Beecher Road School in January to take a good look. Our middle school will be coming too, representatives in our high school to take a look at the program and the assessment design that we have. The assessment design meant to inform our instruction, to see how children are leaving, but also to be an articulation with our middle school and our high school, because we're looking at the K to 12 spectrum. We also have an indicator of success, invitational trip to China, to Shenzhen, one of the highest performing school areas in China, one of the most international. Why did they invite us to go? Because the head of this, one of the heads of that system came here and liked what he saw, and insisted that we go over and visit with them. And they're looking for continued support. Indicator of success, the variety of programs, and I would say demonstrated successful programs to address the social, emotional needs of our students. And you're very familiar with responsive classroom, Project Safe, classroom yoga, family yoga, family team, social skills, connections with a whole variety of networks outside the school. Do we have some complicated cases at times? Yes, every school system does, but we're prepared to address them, to work with children from the youngest age and with the severest needs. Accomplishments, our physical education program. All you have to do is join me and come to see the swimming Olympics, an exiting activity where every single sixth grader participates to see the skill level of our children. And that's everyone participates and every child's successful with that. Remember we had our Olympic swimmer come back a couple of years ago? Not every child will be an Olympic swimmer, but every child will be better prepared for lifelong wellness through this activity and through the multitude of other activities that happen. Beecher Road School is a model for technology education. We're so proud of the fact that six of our educators were selected to present workshops to standing room audience, audiences in our regional conference that took place in the state. Our digital storytelling is another exited, exiting activity where we have a chance to assess what are the skills that our children are developing by sixth grade, coming from preschool right up to sixth grade? And how do they demonstrate their creativity and a whole variety of skills with that? There's the Beecher Road Weekly News that you saw beginning here. There's also opportunities, and you'll see increased opportunities for 24/7 learning. Now, this slide is a very important one. You can try to guess why. It's important because of the people it is. Every one of these people in this slide over here is a highly educated person, highly successful in their field, whatever that it is, academia, medicine, banking, law, and the whole variety of things. And it's a group of people individually, collectively, who are volunteering hours, days, months of their time with one agenda, and that's improving the quality of education. They do that by their physical presence at meetings, by preparing for meetings, by the many committee meetings that kind of drive where we're going, by the questions they ask, by the support that's given. So we have proved that, proven that we are a winning team with the accomplishments. We can't rest on any laurels. We want to get better for our children. So we're asking this winning team, let's go for the goal line, and we're asking you to support our budget. So our team is ready for any questions that you have or any comments or?
I guess first we should have a motion to discuss. I would move that we adopt the 2014-15 budget as presented by the administration.
Secret.
For submission. Any discussion, go.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Dr. Steller. Incredibly comprehensive.
A very interesting story, lots of themes, and I would like to highlight perhaps two of them. You referred to the budget cutback in 2006, 2007. The major casualty there was the elimination of the tag director. There was a, what I would characterize as a rather cynical view that we had in some fashion been warehousing excess capacity in the form of faculty that we needed. The budget was probably on the order of $9 million, and this was, to my recollection, a 4% reduction, $360,000. I'm absolutely certain that we don't have any excess warehousing of faculty and capacity in hand now that the tag position hasn't been filled. And one of the important things that you have hit on is, two, it seems to be two important features. One is, we're called on in December to precisely identify and know what the world on January 1st, 2014 would look like. That's quite a challenge. And in recent years, the things that behaved differently have broken in a fashion that was favorable to our budget. I'm not sure that, and you've already indicated, that with regard to benefits, which constitute 20% of the total budget, that we're not going to be in a favorable position as we were a year ago. With regard to that, I'm not sure why you include 2012, 2013 actual, because it was such a radically different year from what we're experiencing now and what we're confronting as we go forward. On that budgetary summary by object, under the faculty expenses viewpoint, an increase of 2.9%. But my recollection is that the contractual increase is 2%, which would be roughly $140,000 plus the new position essentially is what's happening. So what we're seeing here is a very vivid reflection of the fact that our faculty represent our major fixed costs. And when we have to increase capacity to deal with throughput of children, we have to buy those increases in capacity in very large lumps. So one question I would have, and I think it might be helpful as we go forward. Given your best estimate of what enrollment increases might look like, where are we with regard to capacity that we currently have onboard? Can we mix and match internally, or are we going to be looking at capacity increases maybe over the next couple of years? The other piece of goodness is that once you get your capacity in place, the variable costs associated with the matriculation of each new child are relatively low, certainly low compared to the cost of faculty. And historically, we had used a number of $2,000. I don't know if you would agree with that, but it would be helpful to have that figure in hand, because with increasing enrollment, even if capacity is adequate, costs are going to rise. Costs of fixed capacity will rise, not with a new lump, but with the annual increase. But we'll also be looking at annual increases in costs associated with the variable cost of each new child who enters into Beecher Road School. Dealing with the behavior of educational costs has been a source of delightful entertainment for me over the last 11 years, because most people are really not interested in understanding how that happens. So I think, I think we go a long way here in presenting that, but it would be useful to tidy up a couple of the pieces. So when the criticism comes forward, how can you possibly tolerate these kinds of increases? We know precisely we're buying capacity, and subsequently, we're dealing with those increasing costs that necessarily arise by virtue of increased enrollment. But I think you've done a marvelous job here.
Thank you, Cole. And thank you, Cole. And I want to thank you too, because you have been with the school board a number of years, and you were certainly there when I came on board, and you've helped us a lot with your background to analyze particularly how costs behave, and that's a specialty. And you brought a lot of insight to that, and I'm sure that you'll give us wise counsel as we move along too, because our finance committee is a very important structure of the school board, and that's an opportunity that we have to really, with a core group, representative group, really examine trends and where we're going and try to really make meaning of everything that we do. And we're proud of the fact that we have a number of school board members on that. Dr. Fleishman is the chair of that committee. And also, we have representatives from the town on that, from the Parents Association, from the teachers' union. So it's a real, real think tank, and it gives us a chance to look at complicated variables, make connections, and look ahead. And you know, like the five-year planning was a very big help in doing that and those other.
I would characterize that committee as geriatric. I'm the object of that.
Wisdom, wisdom. Thank you, Cole.
Anybody else have any comments about the budget? Any questions? Okay. So we have a motion. If there's no additional questions, all those in favor? Okay. Let's do this. Okay. Congratulations, Dr. Steller.
As I said, this is a very important slide. This paper reporter, please take this in here. This is a winning team here.
Okay. All right. Facilities Committee, Karen.
We met on December 5th, and we received updates on the capital budget presentation, which occurred on December 3rd, on the boiler installation, which slated to be completed in mid-January, and on the building project, sustainability initiatives, and the completion of repairs to the north entrance doors.
Okay, is there any questions for Karen? Okay. Thank you, Karen. The Building Committee, since, oh, I'm sorry. Since the town meeting, and some people were at the town meeting for the Building Committee, the last Board of Selectmen meeting, they did not have on the agenda the moving of the project referendum. So at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, there was just, there's consideration whether there's an additional town meeting required. And at the next town meeting, I don't know, Florence, if you have any other information, we'll be looking for the move to a referendum for the committee. And the people involved in the project, ESG, are part of the installation of the new boilers. So they're really already, you know, in the school for this particular piece of the project. Policy Committee, Matt.
Policy Committee met on December 5th. Who's really running the committee? I met with Marcia for about 10 or 15 minutes before the other participants met, and we discussed what need to be done. And I came in, opened the meeting and said, I think we'll be done in about a half an hour, in which everybody in the room is shook, they're sitting, no way. Marcia comes walking in, 10 seconds later, I think you guys will be done in about 20, 20 minutes.
Really, Marcia? Wow, that is impressive.
The notes, they were done in 24 minutes.
Very efficient.
We reviewed the 3,000 series, which had been initially reviewed by the previous policy committee. We had to increase or include some legal references to be added to the policy. But other than that, it was a very quick, quick policy meeting, which I was happy to be part of. And we will be meeting again, I'm looking at the notes, I think it's February, I think we're skipping January, going into February, February?
Six.
Six, February 6th. We'll be next meeting at 6 o'clock. We're reviewing the 6,000 series, I think is our last one.
Okay. Any questions for?
I did have a question.
Oh, okay.
There was some.
Right there.
No, ask Matt.
Oh, ask away. I thought I read something. I'm trying to find it now, so I don't ask if that question is appropriate. Let me just go forward. There was something in one of the policies about a transition year, which I didn't think we have anymore. Do we have a transition year?
We do not.
They're one of these policies. I will find it, because I saw it.
In the 3,000 series?
Yeah.
I will take a look just to make sure it gets deleted.
There it is. It says, it's under transportation. It says, transition students are considered as first grade students in these policies.
I will make sure that that is deleted.
I actually read this.
Which number one, which number was that, Steve?
That should be 3141.
Now she's showing her off. 3541.
She doesn't have to show off.
3541. 3541.
3541, C. Okay.
It shouldn't be there.
No, it should not.
And then in the walking distance, they also mentioned transition students also.
Do you have any thoughts? He might want to consider joining the policy committee. It's what I'm thinking.
You have very sharp eyes there.
I really have no more committee slots. I'm done.
All right.
And that brings us to Finance Committee, Dr. Fleishman.
So we talked about the budget, which Dr. Steller so eloquently described, so it might work. The only thing we have is to act on the early retirement incentives. So if someone wants to make a motion, I can describe them.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to offer the early retirement incentives as presented to the memberships of the WEA and the CSEA.
Second. Dr. Steller, do you want to, do we have to go into detail or?
No, we don't have to.
Okay, do. So essentially, in the past, we've offered early retirement incentive packages, and you have them in your packet for approval. If anyone asks questions about them, I'm happy to discuss them.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? All those in favor?
I.
Okay. Is that everybody?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Well, it was everybody.
What I would just add to that is, it's a win-win situation, because it offers teachers who have given long years of service, of valuable service, it was kind of an affirmation of the good service that they've given. At the same time, it represents a cost-saving situation that allows us to deal with our increase in budget. And there's a self-renewing process in the sense that we start gradually to bring on new staff, so that we don't have a bubble where everyone is eligible to retire in one year. So it helps us with our staffing going also.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. CAE Liaison, Lisa?
Pretty quiet from CAE. And in fact, the person who sort of handles the liaison and communications has left CAE, so we're quiet. That's just a personality change. The only thing I would say is, January 15th, the hot topic discussion in Weathersfield is pre-K. That's the state initiatives on pre-K, if anybody is interested.
ACES Liaison report, I didn't make it to the last meeting, so I don't even know when the next one is. Marcia, do you have the date of the next one?
It is the second Thursday of the month, so my guess would be that that should be around the ninth.
Okay. If anybody can make that meeting, please email Marcia. It's a tough time, it's Thursday at 12:15, so...
Where is it?
It's in Hamden, or...
Those are at Skiff Street in Hamden.
Okay. Okay. FOI workshop update, the town holds an FOI, Freedom of Information workshop, especially when there's changes in any of the boards in town. It was a very, very helpful session. There is information on it, I don't know if it's on the town website, the video, because they videotaped the meeting. I'll find out for sure.
It's on the town.
It's on the town website. So if you have any questions, especially if you're new members and weren't able to attend, there's helpful information, and again, it's just an awareness of, you know, what constitutes a public meeting, what we need to be aware of, and it's pretty strict protocols in terms of, you know, the meeting of the board has to be conducted in public and can't be conducted otherwise, so you can look at that if you want to. Public comment, Marcia? No? Okay. Then I guess we're done.
We have a adjournment.
Okay. Those in favor? Lisa?
All right, thank you very much.